First thing I would like to do is introduce the members of the present. We have Peter Condon, Glenn Condon, Richard Wilson is substituting for Chuck Hart. On that end, we have Glenn Gaffey and Ellen Faulkner, who is our executive assistant. And so it's a smaller board tonight, fewer people to ask questions.
Chair is Ellen, don't be bothered.
You can't still.
Okay, you're still, you're turning this one up?
My turn, well, until you appoint somebody, I can sit.
Perfect. Ellen, would you please sit for Peter?
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Okay. So with that completed, normally we sit and describe the process of the meeting, but you heard that two weeks ago, so I don't think you want to sit through that again. So why don't we start the meeting? Thank you for coming, and I believe there was a replant in front of us. So if you please talk to us a little bit about the changes and anything else you need to support the questions we had last time. Oh, wait a minute, I didn't read the public notes. The first hearing is Robert and Margaret Bean, 44 Tucker Road, Kingston, New Hampshire, 03848, tax map R42 lots 1 and 1A. The applicant is requesting approval to change the lot line between the above listed lots. Thank you. Ellen's keeping me on track.
Trying to recall what was discussed. One of the things that came up in the meeting between our last one and this one is the original lot had been 4.7 acres and that was going to kick us into state review. It was a very simple thing to move the lot line slightly along a stone wall and add it up to get it to five acres. So you'll notice that this is a five acre plot now instead of a 4.7 acre. That should be a little easier. Monuments have been set, there was discussion about monuments, there are now monuments at all corners, transition points. And what else we talked about at the last meeting?
Just the right of easement.
The right of easement is marked, you'll notice, it's on the drawing. I still, there's some discussion on that. We've proposed a 12-foot wide road maintenance easement along Tucker Road and it is referenced in note 10 in the drawing. In discussions, we recognized that from about 100 feet up from the Thorn Road, Tucker Road, and wrapping all the way around on Back Road, that's NRCS easement. And we had discussed last meeting, the NRCS was unwilling to, in fact, they told me that I was unable to give any further easements in that area. So what we've done instead is we've taken all the unencumbered area, which is all of Tucker Road and noted it, for proposed easement. We still have not, we're willing to grant a reasonable easement on that balance, but we have still not seen any proposal to define the wording on that.
I did have the opportunity to talk with Rich about that. And he does not have any existing language. It always is just as reflected as a maintenance easement along roadway.
So that we've done here.
It both shows, it shows us both a note number 10 and it also shows how it's indicated on the plan.
So there's no documentation per se that goes with it?
Correct. Rich has never prepared any language or offering for.
Okay, then would it be, is it sufficient then for note number 10 to say maintenance easement because it doesn't give, since there's no documentation to go with it, that doesn't say that it's an easement for the town's benefit for maintenance?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't say anything. And truly, there are 200-year-old maples and stone walls within that easement.
So we're kind of concerned.
We are more than kind of concerned. There are seven enormous maple trees. I know the town is never going to touch this property, but what if 50 years from now most trees are still there? They decide to, so they're going to plow through the stone walls and cut down 200-year-old trees.
That isn't the town's practice and whether that changes in the future, I don't know. That wasn't my question though, my question was that since there is no documentation, usually an easement, as you guys know, will say, you know, the easement is given by somebody for the benefit of somebody else. And since we don't have that kind of documentation, I didn't know if the note needed to be a little bit more explicit about.
Something like potential maintenance easement for town use?
Well, I think that's what he tried to say.
It says road maintenance easement.
There's note 10 on the drawing, tried to. It's road maintenance and it's a town road, so I guess it's presumed that it's.
The town.
That it's the town. I mean, if that's sufficient, then that's fine. If that's sufficient for you, then that's road.
Okay.
That's how I interpreted it when I read it.
And everybody received the email thread with NRCS, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that was pretty clear.
It was, it was very clear.
Nothing was happening with that.
Even if we put it on there, nothing was going to happen.
Honestly, we've dealt with things in the past, for example, the power company wanting to cut through the easement. They have been generally easy to work with, honestly, we've had, we've found them fairly good.
I think that you might want to actually clarify that it's for town, capital T, road maintenance, because there's nothing to say that a private developer in the future wants to do something to develop that road, to get to some backland. I'm just saying, if you specifically say town of Kingston, road maintenance, it's clear that it's for the town, not a private.
If the wording on note 10 were to read, a proposed 12-foot wide town of Kingston road maintenance easement is shown on Tucker Road.
I just think that clarifies that it is specifically for the town.
I agree. I realize you probably don't want to be making changes to the plan.
Well, I've got, I have one comment.
But I think that's, but I think that's important. If you think that's important.
I love that they didn't grant a balance as they were asked to, but the entire purpose of, in full disclosure, I still take issue with the state of New Hampshire saying that this required state subdivision if it had been under five acres. Because, and when I pressed the gentleman at DES, that the purpose of that permit is to ensure that there can be a septic system in a well located on the site, that there was already a septic system in a well located on the site, didn't seem to cause any problem with him. He said, that doesn't make any difference. So although I still don't agree that this is required, he said that it was, but only if it was the old 4.76 acre site, and it is now a five acre site. So note number nine, it says state subdivision approval is required, is not true.
So that needs to go away?
It really does, that needs to be removed because it is no longer required.
So you vote mainly five acres to get away from the issue of.
To not have to get state subdivision approval. So it really isn't good to have a note that says it's required?
So note nine would go away and then the one above the maintenance easement becomes note nine?
Delete note nine and rewrite note 10.
Which would do note nine to add the word town of Kingston before road.
Yes, yes, modify note 10. And you've got part of conservation easement is crossed out, it's lined through here on the plan, vertical lines.
Yeah.
Is that?
Oh, did you have one of those?
What, what, I'm sorry.
I forgot why. On the plans on Thorn Road, on northern boundary of your existing.
Right.
House, it says part of conservation easement, that's got vertical lines coming through it, as if you had worked with needing that.
So there's some numbers underneath that too.
Oh, yeah. 266.
That's on my lot, they won't record it like that.
Yeah, the registry won't do that.
Yeah.
I don't see that on the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yours is full size, it may not transcribe.
I'm not seeing that either, I'm seeing part of conservation.
Well, you have a full-size plan set, yeah, you see that all here, like they did here, it's got vertical lines getting through here and here.
When that printer printed, and it refused.
It said tax.
I don't know, there's a few spots where.
Okay, yeah, I am.
Yeah, that's nice.
As long as the real map doesn't show that. So is it defined where the note about the proposed 12-foot easement, where that applies?
Where the conservation easement. It says where no easement exists and that's a section along, if you, if you take a look at the easement, you can see with this one too, the dotted line is the edge of the easement comes over to here. So the easement to NRCS wraps all the way around here, but it stops at that.
Just this area, part of your house.
Yeah.
Just Tucker.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So those lines don't show on the large.
On that one.
They show. It's an art, I could spot a copy, I'd say.
Any other comments or questions?
Has Mr. St. Helier commented on this at all?
He and I spoke about it yesterday. He was unimpressed that NRCS didn't approve of the easement, but he didn't question it. And when I asked him, he felt that he wanted me to state that, he didn't say he wanted me to, but I'm doing it anyway. And he held that he would have preferred the larger easement along Tucker Road, but understood that the board seemed comfortable with the one that was being proposed and discussed.
Generally speaking, that comes up in subdivision, this is, this was already subdivided into the two lots and they're moving a lot line that's.
Yeah, it's a lot.
And so really when the town or the state wants to widen the road or run their easement, right of easement, whatever, they need to purchase, they can use up a name, whatever, but they usually have to compensate. It's.
That's not what the easement's doing.
Well, the easement is for the taking of land, it's for maintaining.
It's for taking, yes.
For the right entry, that's right.
Maintaining, but unless that takes away the use of that.
It prohibits, it prohibits building, constructing something in it, but in this case, that all falls within the setback that already exists and it doesn't allow any construction.
Right.
So there is no, my answer to you would be, there is no taking.
Stone walls or having to be overriding requirements if you can.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta say, because of the condition of this road, the degree of development that exists on it and the unlikely of a lot existing in the future, I don't foresee that there's going to be an expansion of this road, but it might happen.
It's not going to happen on that side, with the conservation easement.
The other side, the other side is also covered with a house lot. And then what looks like a nice wide open space has a huge big power easement right down the middle of it. So the other side of Tucker Road is also used up already. Nobody's going to build on any of the property.
So I can have the minutes reflected accurately, the easement is basically 12 feet on the Tucker Road?
On Tucker's, what Richard asked for.
Correct. Unfortunately, Tucker Road is not encompassed by the.
Right, it's not covered by the existing, that's perfect.
And is it 20 feet where available on Back Road or is it still just 12 feet?
Nothing on Back Road.
So there's nothing else? And it's for the whole Back Road, the conservation?
The NRCS easement wraps all the way along Back Road, wraps around Thorn Road and comes 100 feet up Tucker. That's NRCS easement all in that area. And it's noted as a part of conservation easement that Peter saw aptly discuss across the gust head, that it looked like it was marked off, but that is all easement area. The unease portion starts from the end of that, which is about 100 feet up the road and runs all the way up Tucker and goes up to our lot line. Now recognize that there's no easements on the opposite side of the road and there are no easements past our property. So those are all uneased, they're already current, you know, ownership. So this small section of easement, if it helps the town in any way, I don't have a real problem with it, only in that I just don't want them in there cutting down maple trees or building stone walls, that's my, my opinion.
Richard, if you've given the easement and somebody felt like doing it, they could, just as a tree left. Well, it just, it is an issue with drainage.
Yeah, it depends on what you do.
Yeah. There isn't. It's one of the reasons why there's so much wetlands on the property is it all drains off onto the property. We've got lots of wetlands on our property. Any other comments or questions? It's a pleasure for, oh, there's no public, so there's no public comment. It's a pleasure for moving forward.
I make motion to approve the plan as submitted with conditions that note number nine on the plan dated 5/2/22 be stricken and note number 10 be amended to reflect a proposed 12-foot wide town of Kingston road maintenance easement.
And that then becomes note nine?
Correct.
Is that maintenance and road easement? So I don't know. Or does it just say road easement?
Road maintenance.
Thank you.
Road maintenance easement, so.
You'd want to be adding town of Kingston prior to the word road.
Yep.
And that was, and that was your motion.
Do we have a second?
Whatever.
Any further discussion?
Okay, did everyone second that?
Yeah.
You can use a booth to second it.
So we left one without a motion. I'll be monitoring time to meet the conditions.
Right.
Normally it's, it would be, I should let the chair talk about this.
Normally it's 90 days. If you'd like something longer than that, then you need to let us know.
I don't think so. What's the next step, Dr. Lee, is the law being modified?
Next step is we have to vote on that.
Yeah. But you're chucking 90 days afterwards. I assume we can vote within 90 days. So is the standard 90 days a period of issue? Yes, I think that.
Any further comment, questions? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? I think we're unanimous.
Thank you, Peter. The next step, as I understand it, is to get this modified and bring my law back to you for signature.
You'll also have to give me funds to record it.
I'm sorry, so.
You'll have to give me funds to record it.
Oh, okay.
Because we can't take that on a desk, so.
Okay, I'll bring a check, put it when I bring it back, so you, and you, you know, how much of this ahead of time?
Uh, might only be 69 and then maybe 25. It might, you might need two checks, so bring two, because one may have to go to the rent street, but I'll have to confirm that when you come in, so just bring two. It's 50 and.
Yeah, I don't think they'll do the L check because we're not actually creating a new law, we're doing a minor adjustment.
Okay, that's good. And if they do, then Glenn will have to call you, tell you to come in again, bring another check, it'll be his fault, so.
Really, they don't do L checks for a lot?
I believe that they do.
What is the legal? Subdivisions mostly.
No, it's only, it's only if you're creating a new, I think a new property with a tax stamp.
Or if you're buying or selling property.
Yeah.
Unless there's some exemptions for that as well, if it's going from two people to a trust owned by those two people, things like that.
So with those checks, that takes care of all the legality, so making sure that this is properly posted.
Correct.
Do that, correct.
Thank you.
Do that, thank you.
All right.
Guess we're all set.
We're all set.
You don't have much more.
Good to see you.
Want these? We can, we'll just start on these.
I have the three that I need to do, one, you give me one so I can get it to Rich.
You can add this one if you need.
Well, we've got whatever, we've got everyone's just.
Richard? You're the official designee, if Chuck isn't here, to this lucky vote pack?
It's automatic, the chair.
He's the chair.
I thought the select board had been voted off.
I thought they did too.
I believe that's the way it's structured. According to what they read today, the night, the child will have to be sworn in against the rest of the group. When you're the offhand, or the bottom board would do this.
I would, I would, that's the only reason I'm asking, is because I don't think there's any chance this decision is going to get challenged, but if, if.
Not that you just don't have.
If we're dealing like 266.
We don't need a split anyway.
I do believe however, that the board of selectmen, while not necessarily voting, did state that as the chairman, he fills in for all the other selectmen.
Oh, they did that, that's totally different.
I mean, it wasn't a vote, but I believe that statement was stated.
I think it needs a vote and I'm happy to just look into that, because I don't think anything that we're going to do tonight is going to be impactful, but that's my concern.
Celtics started signing alcohol.
That's simply my concern is that, I love having you here because you have a ton of history with this board.
So Monday, just take a vote, okay?
But there is a process.
Are you going to challenge this?
No, they're not going to challenge it. Yes, bro.
We're free and clear.
You are, you are. This is all just in cap, yes.
So Monday, just take a vote, okay? Until we can stop talking about it. Thank you.
Okay.
Three seconds.
All right, move on to board business. We'll start with, why don't we do the minutes first? Motion to accept the minutes for October 19th, 2021?
Okay, so the best one was there. Yeah, you were.
No, you were not, you were outside.
It was because we voted on the thing of, what was the name, Ox Ridge?
Granite Fields.
Granite Fields, we have 33 units, we confirmed that that was in fact, I would vote, now we have a question.
No, you weren't in the meeting, that wasn't you.
What was it?
You were gone.
You don't want to know.
Were you out west somewhere?
Were you in Kentucky?
No, in October, you were in.
No, October, weren't you out west?
October? I thought you said April.
No, she said October.
October, she's, sorry.
Did you have to second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I just heard about it, I thought you said April.
April 5th, the motion to accept the minutes of April 5th.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed. All right. Next thing would be correspondence. So while you're looking them up, one of the things we received was an email from Morgan Hollis, escort, God's man Hollis in Nashville, in reference to 266 through 125, the LLC site plan. Hi Glenn, a question is risen to the next, as to the next steps on site. My client has received its AOT permit and had previously received its DES permit to fill the isolated wetland and accordingly intends to proceed with a limited process of filing a notice of intent to cut a driveway to the wetland and around the wetland area, filing a limited SWPVP for excavating the wetland soils and filling the wetland in accordance with a DES permit, and then engaging the contractor to perform the excavation and filling. It is my understanding and opinion that this construction work may proceed without the need for a signed site plan, but I want to be certain that the town is in agreement. Can you please, with the necessary parties and advice?
So I told Mr. Morgan in a quick email back then, that I thought he shouldn't be doing anything on site without the signed site plan. In retrospect, I do believe that he could file an intent to cut because anyone can file an intent to cut.
But that doesn't mean you're going to have to then cut.
I think taking it that next step is altering the land in a way that should be done with the plans with the site plan, which would mean we would have a signed site plan. But I don't think, I know that he's trying, he's trying to make the distinction that what he, what he wants to act on are state approvals, which is fine, except those, like the intent to file, I mean, the intent to fill the wetlands one, we had to do a condition use permit on that. So it's a, it's a term wetland as well. So I just don't, I just can't agree with them that they can do this without a signed high law. Why would we go down the road of differentiate what things can be done on an approval given by the planning board on something that is still conditionally approved and we don't have a signed high law?
But they don't have an approval.
They don't. They, they, any DOT permit has not been granted. And I gotta tell you, it's going to be a lot.
That the DOT permit is for the driveway and.
Just for the driveway.
Just for the driveway.
Just for the driveway.
And he mentioned in here that we need to build a road in for the cutting.
Yes, that, that's, that's why they want the intent to cut is because the interior, interior to the site, so not the DOT department, but interior to the site, they want to lay out a road to be able to do, get vehicles to, they want what they want to fill.
Yeah, I think the wetland filling is definitely not, it's the only, only part of this construction that is still in the conditional approvals that haven't met. Harvesting wood, if there was a separate intent to cut with the, you know, that, even that is.
You can, you can make that argument with a straight face, I think.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
I just don't get how they made the filling, I know it's a state permit, but we require from our end an action that was granted, but it's a local action, it's tied to our site plan. And we don't have that site plan yet. So we're running, that's a, then we have somebody, then we're, then we're in the awkward situation of sending our inspectors out there.
Oh, yeah.
Watching what they're doing for the state permits and you know they're going to just, they're doing two other stuff out there, you just know they are.
For one thing, even the intent to cut, until, until they get the full permit, you know, the full approval, they would have to maintain a buffer around the wetlands in the cutting because.
Which any DES would require any.
Right. So anyways, I don't know if they gave much.
Ellen?
My comment is that we can with a straight face tell this gentleman why he can't do it. I can't with a straight face tell the public why we're going to let him.
Well, the intent to cut thing is an odd, it's an odd rule in law at the state.
I'm just talking about the manipulation of the land and moving that around. If they can get an intent to cut because legally anybody can, then they can, but the rest of it, moving dirt and earth.
Moving dirt is not part of the intent to cut.
It's still, it's still, they can do an intent to cut, but when you do an intent to cut on a property that has a site plan attached to it, then all of a sudden, they're sort of co-terminous. And that makes it very messy to me.
And why don't we say no and let them come in and explain why we're not?
Glenn?
Yeah, any work that, if this were not part of an approved site plan, from just somebody with a lot, a woodlot, yeah, they file an intent to cut, they harvest the timber, they do whatever they do, that's one thing. But I mean, any modification to that parcel, be it earth moving, tree removal, whatever, should only be done as approved by the action of this board with the approved site plan. by the action of this board with the approved site plan. And until that's in fact, I certainly put in support of putting my hand up for any, any work to be done on site.
Well, that's the purpose, like we would vote to that, the question is whether if they went ahead and did it on the intent to cut.
They could file an intent to cut.
Whether the select
Can we just explain that? That our understanding is you can file whatever you want to file, but at the moment you start doing anything other than cutting, you do not have approval.
Can't cut it.
You can't cut either. I think upon this me is precedence. Because if you start making an exception for that, then people are going to want to make an exception for something else and cite it as precedence.
So why wouldn't vote allow?
You know, looking at it from their side, I don't see what they're gaining.
Yeah.
Because if they go out there to cut for the building and then add a little bit around that pond, it's going to cost them next to nothing if they send two trips out there.
I don't, I mean
It just seems like they're wasting money almost for the little bit of cutting they've got to do around the wetland there.
Well, you know that they're not, whatever they're doing, they're not planning on wasting money. So there's something going on.
That's my point, is it kind of bothers me that
So here's what I'd like to do, because attendant to this is another request. Then we allow them to engage us in the discussion of removing the single condition for the DOT permit to be taken out of the overall conditions. Because they can, they feel they can do every other one. And then have that DOT permit ta- attached to a building permit.
Why would we do that?
Why would we do that?
So here is my response. I would like to tell them that the board has said, we are not comfortable with you doing this piecemeal state permitting activity on a site plan that is not a recorded site plan. And that a discussion of separating the DOT permit has to be something you speak to, to the board in public.
Fully noticed.
So is the DOT the only permit that's outstanding?
I think that it is.
And is this unusual that it would be?
I mean, I don't think, it's the only permit I think, but it's not the only condition. Because I don't think that Dana has, I know that they've gone back and forth on the monitoring program. And I think that she's given it a tentative yes, I'm not sure she's given it a final yes. And we don't have a sign, and we don't have a revised my law that has all the other conditions that we said we wanted to see on the my law. So the conditions, but I do think that they're all really doable. Other than the DOT one, the DOT is, the responses, they're like acting like they're just seeing this for the first time.
Really?
Their correspondence, Division 6, ooh, you go for cocoa nuts.
Listen, wordless challenges persist everywhere.
They, it is just weird how the responses like, we haven't given you anything yet. Even though they've supplied them, traffic reports and ad nauseam engineering plans. It blows my mind, but to hear Mr. Hollis speak, they don't think they're anywhere close to getting that DOT permit.
I don't think that, based on the discussions and the public concerns and the whole thing, that we have any ability to say, oh yeah, we're just going to take that off.
They know that, that the first response I gave to them was, you can't do any of that because we don't have a bond. But that I will definitely talk to the board about this because I can't make that decision. But I just don't see how
When you say that, then who comes the precedent?
Yeah, this, this question, the way he's asked it is, is to do the work and excavate and fill wetlands and all that stuff. The answer is no, that's all part of the
It's all, he's trying to couch that they're only doing state permits. And so that the town shouldn't be concerned, but that's, it's just not true.
Yeah, but these, these permits were only obtained as part of the site plan. The only, the only reason I had brought up the harvesting of timber, which is not what they've been doing, they actually intend to make the driveway, driveway and then cut around the wetlands. Which is just the opposite of what they would be allowed to do if they filed an intent to cut. Because they wouldn't be allowed to file, you know, cut around the wetlands. So the bottom line is that this is relative to, it's related to the construction, which they don't have permission yet, so. I think easily, easily answered, I think, I'm not sure we could probably vote on this, but my vote would be that the board says no, no site work until you have a final approval.
Is this something that requires a vote? Or is this something that we could just?
Well, it's a request.
It's a request.
It's a request, I mean, I'd be comfortable to vote.
I'm going to second Peter's motion.
There we go.
Yeah, to vote, no, I would vote against, you stated essentially stated motion.
Right.
I did call it a motion, but I did, that's sort of what it was.
Anyone remember what it might have been?
Is it no work to be done on site until final approval?
Site plan assigned and reported.
And then, can I counsel him that if he, if, if we're going to do any bifurcation of the conditional approval, it really, we really need to renotice. I mean, we can't just, that's just like a baby switch.
Oh yeah, that, that
It's a baby switch. Yeah.
Well, all the DOT stuff was, as somebody already said tonight, was a really key issue with regard to this whole thing. And, you know, on the part of the board in public.
Yes. Okay, good.
So any bifurcation project would require
A public hearing to discuss it with the planning board.
Is that part of the motion?
It is. So we have a motion, and we have a second, we have the entire motion. Are you ready? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You're unanimous.
Thank you.
So Glenn will contact Mr. Hollis.
Oh, I will.
Attorney Hollis.
Attorney Hollis.
It's very ballsy.
Also in the emails that everyone received was the updated aquifer protection description. Did anyone have any?
I think that you incorporated your changes.
Yes.
Dana incorporated your changes again. So I, I think everybody's happy with that.
I have copies of that if anyone wants to look at it.
Didn't he make a motion to approve it as a?
No, we were going to talk about it.
What was that? It was in my mind.
Put it off till tonight because if I can remember what the technical change was.
Okay.
Dana has now incorporated, so I can have her.
Okay. So Ellen, check that, okay. So
Does anyone need a coffee?
No, I checked what you sent us.
Okay.
We ready to move forward with approving the language for the aquifer protection? No?
Yeah, so move.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good. Helps when we all wait in the wings. Okay, we have a lo- a letter from Aloha Overhead Doors. And to whom it may concern, please accept this letter as notification of our request to have the funds released from Escrow. Please make a check out to Matthew Francis. Please include with the check an accounting of the funds and any disbursements. Thank you. So have we completed everything we need to do with the lower doors?
Is there any on-site work that we're going to get back in the interview? I mean, they were going to put the doors in, but that doesn't part, that's the building structure that does that.
Right, there was just my, my costs and Dennis's costs, I believe they've all been
Yes, yes, so almost we released the funds from Escrow once the final campaign was done.
Does Cindy generally send copies of like my?
They have asked for it, so on the, on that paperwork for Cindy, I said, please send them the details, things like that.
We have a second, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. We're also going to have a discussion on interrogation. Tonight?
Or anything in the filings.
I'm kind of bummed that Peter's mine here didn't see the link.
We could put it on, I think we could just choose another word that is
Yeah.
I have two words that I'd like to throw out first, suggestion.
Semantics.
I have either examination or investigation, the
No.
What about discussion?
How about question?
How about, how about questions slash comments? Isn't it, that's a public, it's got the public comment part, so.
Sure. I mean, frankly, I'm fine with interrogation because I mean, that's just
I mean, it's only been like that for 40 years, by the way. Forty years, we use that word.
Got like a stop of like meaning to it over the years, and it's a very good word, it means asking questions.
And it's only in our words of procedure, so it's just
But we have written it anyway.
But I mean, if people feel more comfortable with questions and comments, it sounds very polite. It's fine.
Unintimidating.
Any further discussion on changing interrogation to questions and comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to be opposed, just to be a pain.
Okay.
It's been like this for 40 years.
Okay, time limits.
What was the question about comments?
Well, I think that was related to when we're having public hearings and people are getting, making comments. The question was, do we, should we be asserting time limits on votes? You know, I thought about this, and since I've, since I've got the line now, I'll say my, my piece. I think that there was a thought that maybe in the bottom of rules of procedure, we might want to put something on state's time limits. I mean, I think that if we could put something in there that says that the chair has the right to to define time limits for public comments, depending on the situation on a given public hearing. I don't think we want to set time limits in our own procedure. Because it's always, because it's always up to the chair to define how the meeting goes. And, you know, in some cases, you probably don't have to explain how it's in another cases, yeah, you probably do.
And you may want to go beyond time limits and just say, if you would like to reiterate what previous figures said, just give your name, location, and state you, your prior comment or whatever. That's all part of things that you, are your prerogative. And this guy actually tweeted out, last Saturday's OSI workshop. And, so, they, they had suggested that you can put in your motion that the chair has that ability. Does somebody ask if you could cut off a comment because of, you know, reiterate? Is that, yes, you can say, you can ask anybody about new information if that's shared. Or just
I think it all depends on the meeting.
State your favor of.
You know, if we've, if we've got 50 people that want to speak, certainly limiting the timeframe so that everyone has an opportunity to speak before the end of the meeting is
You know, and over the years, I mean, we've done that. When we've had big, big projects coming before us, and there's been a lot of public interest and you know, people want to have their say, yes, that's, that's fine, it's a public hearing. But when it's one after the other, taking longer to time to essentially say the same thing. That's when Steve Buckley was saying, the chair, you know, can say, okay, we've heard five people in a row with the same comment basically. And if anyone else has that same comment, you know, you can
You can raise your hand.
Go on, Rebecca, there's three exactly. But not go on and on. Same as I said.
I mean, I've been watching other, whether it's other towns or other forums where there's opportunity for public comment, there's also, there's also the option to limit the time to, you know, given the number, the volume of people here, we're going to limit it to two minutes.
Exactly.
One minute per
Happens at the state house all the time.
You could have a statement, just in the thing that the chairman has the authority to limit
Length of?
Length of comments and or
And duration of public comment within the context of a larger meeting, right?
Right, and actually, Richard probably could give us better information on this. And that is that this select board did make that reform a couple of years ago, where they said that they need, they have two public comment sections. And you're going to, you had that written down.
We typically say three minutes is what it says.
But that's already preordained, so if you get somebody real hot that comes in and just says, I have a right to speak, yeah, yeah.
But the difference too is, just so we don't get confused, is they're having a public meeting. We're having a public hearing.
Yeah.
Public meeting, they don't have to let anyone speak. And they do because they're trying to let the public, but we're having a public hearing where the point is to let the public speak, so they don't want to get the two confused.
That's
Well said.
And to Bravis' point earlier, you've seen what's happened at school boards around the country and and some others, and those time meetings, which I don't think that's a public meeting, not hearing. There's got to be somebody controlling the amount of input. But in a hearing, yeah, I think just to comment on the chair and not the duration.
All you have to do is look at the number of people in the room and make that decision. So if the chair already has the authority to do that, do we need to have it in our procedures?
We don't, we don't think to.
All right.
I mean, I think, I think the only thing, if you wanted to add something, would be just a statement to the effect that the chair has the right to limit comment here.
I actually got to say, it's better to have it in the rules of procedure than to not, we've talked about it. It's not been the only time we've talked about it. And so to make the change is easy to do and if somebody ever questions it, it's their turn.
Yeah, we're not picking up them because it was already written down, yeah.
Even though the chair has that right already, it doesn't hurt to have a statement.
It really does.
Even if it was a procedure saying that.
Yeah.
Without getting into a lot of detail because you want that flexibility.
Yeah, the vagueness, I think, is important in this instance. To, to make it clear that it's going to be a discretionary call by the chair.
And what statement would we like to put in?
So if we were going to do that, it would be in 12.0, procedure for hearing the agenda. We have the order to the agenda, the presentation of the plan, inspection by Abadas and other interested parties. And maybe it should be, and decisions final, recorded meetings, bylaw revisions.
It could also fall under responsibility of the chair, right? Someone 2.1 will say the chair also has the ability to limit.
Yeah, I think it's best to
That sounds good.
Time constraints, both during the public hearing and, I don't know.
Time constraints for presentation and
Missing page three. And five.
Oh, really? I bet it didn't double copy.
I bet it didn't double copy.
Well, let me, let me, well, I have to redo them anyway, so let's just, we'll do it that way.
That's funny. Okay, so with those missing, I'm going to have to rely on somebody else.
1.1, responsibility of the chair, we'll put it in the right place.
2.1.
2.1, 2.1. So what do we want it to say?
At the discretion of the chair, the length, a time limit may be placed on public comments. On comments from the public.
Actually
And presentation.
And you probably want the flexibility to, to be able to constrain time limits for basically presentation, public comment, whatever, I mean, all of the above.
I can think of one recent. It's in the last year or two, where the applicant needed to be reined in a little bit.
So the discretion of the chair, time limits may be placed on public comment and presentation?
And does, is this un-American and commented by the board? Is it time to the chair person?
That's un-American.
Well, it is kind of un-American, but is there, is there an instance where the planning board chairman should be able to say to a planning board member, I'm cutting you off?
Yes, absolutely.
And I think if that is, if we entertain the belief that that is so, we should say that.
Yep.
And so that, because we've had at least one board member. And so that, uh because we've had at least one board member that would question that, I think. And it would be nice if it was our rules.
Would you like to read that back, Alan?
I have at the discretion of the chair, time limits may be placed on public comment, presentation, and board comment.
Yep. So we, oh, you 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 actually lead the debate.
It's fine, I'll second.
No, you.
Nope.
You do it all second.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And the chair, when when you read to the point where you have a break, um I found in part of the statute that talks about the appointment of alternates.
Followed me too. It's okay, Glenn's do things, Glenn's do things at the same, in sort of the same side as we're gonna do.
Well, the last thing on here is technology use, so why don't we take that first and then we'll be done with that and go on to other things.
Technology use, as in bringing over objections?
Was it was technology use having to do with our new emails?
I think it had more to do with whether or not we were going to allow Zoom. And I think the board had sort of said that we don't have the ability and the correct technology to do it at this point. But it was on your list and nobody really motioned it, you guys were talking about it, so I just included it.
We have a we have a long.
And it was also.
We can address that again before before.
But it was also whether you were not going to include as a requirement that they bring in their own technology to be able to use a screen.
Yes.
Or whatever, so that's.
Yep.
Hopefully that wouldn't be an issue before long.
Before long? Yeah, before long.
I've got two bids and two more on the way.
All right, then I think we can.
So should we table that?
Sure.
That's cool.
If you approach that.
Congratulations.
Yeah, that's really good.
That's furthest we've been in eight years.
That's why we're having a real hard time getting people to kind of look at it, say, yeah, this looks great, I'll do this, 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 never.
Well, it's like hiring contractors these days, I mean, even though they kind of look at it, you're very lucky if they if they respond a little bit better. Another story.
Okay. There we go. So.
Oh, go ahead, Glenn, you're the paid staff person.
Paid staff person. So so anyway, ours is six seventy-three, six.
Roman three.
Roman numeral three.
It's back over.
It says, the alternate for a city or town council member, select man, or village district commission member, shall be appointed by the respective council, board, or commission. And then the terms of alternate members shall be the same as those of the respective members and may be in addition to the alternates provided for in paragraph R. So it so it says that it's an appointment.
So do we need to reappoint Steve at some point too?
Steve Hesman.
We do that, yeah.
He's all those.
So, but but.
And you're thinking really.
Yeah, but yes, the the select boarder needs to appoint.
They need to.
Their alternate.
They do. And so if. You know, Eric Moore, the only one who showed up.
The board's select man.
I didn't get I didn't get that when we talked about that.
Well, because the issue we talked about before was, did they vote it? No, did they say it? Yes, but there was no vote.
Voted it four years ago, that the chairman is always gonna be the stand-in for any members that couldn't make a meeting. And from what we read, it's the only person, the chair is the only person that doesn't have to have the sworn-in sheet done.
Ah.
No, the none of the selectmen have to get sworn into this board. They're there by their position as a.
Right, right, they're they're as they're.
Well, that's by virtue of their position, huh?
Who knows what you read here, however, but here's a question though, is it is it is it a big deal if you had your board just voted to have you be the alternate for all the rest of the selectmen? Is that a problem, just to do it?
You can make it happen, you're the chair.
Yeah, I'm real excited.
So you can just you can just have to do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Same.
I feel like I'm opening myself up for everybody to be absent from all the committees around.
Or just or just so we lose board.
So we need um some alternates. So I think we had discussed putting out a notice saying that requesting people.
I thought I was told downstairs that you contacted them and they were going to do it for multiple boards. This is not accurate?
I didn't talk to them about it, no.
I will, I will, I will follow through on that.
Okay.
Talk to Hubel what?
Or maybe, did I mention it?
I don't know, maybe they read in the minutes?
I don't know.
I don't know, but I will follow through on it.
I don't remember doing that, but I've been in the office for other matters recently, so maybe something came up at the time.
I will, I will, it could have been, I could have mentioned it and somebody else's, so I will, I will follow through on that.
Okay.
Alternates, putting a note in the paper.
Somebody did say that there were a number of other boards that needed alternates.
Right, and I think they've got a.
And I saw something in the paper asking for alternates to the zoning board.
Okay, and I thought that was going, I was told that that was going to say zoning and planning.
Okay.
Apparently not.
We're looking for something to scroll on the screen, so maybe we'll put something on the screen scrolling that alternates are needed on the following board.
Well, HTC, and I know the HTC page was recently updated because there was all kinds of outdated information. And on there, they did add a little note that they're looking for alternates as well, so.
Well, we should help put that on the planning board page as well.
For it.
Yeah.
So we'll get it on the planning board page, we'll put it on the scroll, and maybe do a press release to the paper? Maybe put something on the Kingston Facebook page?
We, if if you wish to do that personally, but the town doesn't.
Okay.
It's not, that's why it's not official, yeah.
It's not official, so we don't utilize it officially.
That's all right.
The law's goal.
I really put anything on.
If it were if it were a consponsoring page, that would be different.
And um uh probably on the front page of the website, there should be stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so that people don't have to worry about the individual pages.
Correct.
You should get rid of that, that info section along.
Maybe if you know somebody that wants to join us.
Yeah.
You've brought a number of people to the planning board.
What's that?
In your time.
He's running out of neighbors, someone, we want to get on the board.
We're all getting the word out.
Adam's not doing it anymore, you know, he's already gone.
I believe.
You've 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 done that a lot, actually.
It's not your son-in-law, he from town wants to be.
They're not allowed to.
Why?
They're.
Oh, because of their position, I'm sorry, I'm like, they live in town now, I was, sorry, no, I I caught him.
Very strict about uh because I thought about getting him to be on the trustees thing, because that's what he basically does. And the rules say that he can't.
But we don't want to break the rules.
No, no.
I don't want to do it.
So any other business to come before the meeting?
I have one other item for the uh proposed change for the uh rules and features, and that is that um what we've got working for us now for determination of regional impact is good, and that is that um when Glenn gets something to come in, you make a determination pretty much whether it might be uh a regional impact and then make a recommendation to the board. But according to the statute, all land use boards always have to make a DRI on all hearings and before the hearing. On, you know, most of them are gonna be obvious, uh but we may want to put in this, just a statement saying prior review of the hearing on application accorded, determine whether the application would have a regional impact for RSI twenty-six fifty-six, I can give you the board on this. Uh if a regional impact is determined to exist, the hearing should be continued to allow sufficient time for notification of effective counts in the RPC. Now, we had that one case where people, oh, I guess it's the two sixty-six project, or maybe another one, where they said, yes, we know this is a regional impact, so we want you to get started on making the notifications beforehand, so the board, you told the board that and we agreed. But um technically, we're supposed to, in a public hearing, or in a public meeting, so we need to make a determination on each application that comes before us.
Yeah, it's it's a really poorly written statute.
It is, but.
What it says is, as soon as an application is received, you're you're supposed to make the determination, but.
Crumpled.
But that really isn't possible, because the statute also says that the planning board will make the determination, and the minute of the minutes of the meeting at which that that determination is made is to be distributed along to whoever is now given granted a butter status. So the whole idea of as soon as you can, that the statute says, is, I just take it as being irrelevant. It can't happen until the first public hearing by the planning board, because the statute says the planning board has to make the determination.
Right.
They they imply that statute in the very first paragraph.
Yeah.
And then everything else in the in this law makes it clear that it isn't a staff decision, because the planning board has to make the determination, they have to determine who's going to be granted a butter status, and they have to say why out of the reasons given. So we just, it just has to be part of the first discussion when you open the public hearing. And you can either make the bold call that you're just going to continue the entire process, um or you could just, this is harder, it's harder for me to say that you should have a hearing, we haven't noticed everyone. You've noticed the legal abutters, and then you're making a motion to broaden who you consider has a right to a butter notification. So I don't think you have to continue, I think that that's something that the board could consider each and every time.
Is there a possibility of, when the plans come in, they're often in, or we know something's coming in in advance of our meeting, maybe even a meeting in advance of our meeting? So if we knew that something was coming in for our next meeting, we can't talk about it, but can we talk about it to say there's?
That's the issue, isn't it?
Yeah, something's coming in, and and can we just?
Then you know, then the abutters, to the the real abutters to the process, aren't involved with the determination of whether or not it's a regional project.
But can't we, but can't we just say?
But but it's the same they have to be.
This may be a regional process.
There are abutters, which means the planning board shouldn't be considering the application without them being involved.
Hold on, hold on, time for one second, though. Up until recently, don't know how, recently back, but it used to be that at the planning board's public meeting or at the end of the public hearing, you used to review the plans.
Right.
For completeness, and those other things, and the board gave it to you to do, but the board used to do it. So the board used to look at the plans to say, yeah, that's complete, yeah, I can go on the agenda. Why couldn't you then make the decision that this has to be regional impact?
Because the statute says that it's the planning board's responsibility.
No, I mean the planning board doing it.
She's saying hell.
Like she used to just.
The only problem I have with that is you're, we're not just allowed to make that decision. The planning board also has to make the decision on who's gonna be granted that of other status and for what reason.
Well, yeah, but how many times does this happen? Can we ju- just, I'm just saying, couldn't you do it, a- a- like, say it was um tonight and you had gotten the plans already? Couldn't at the end of this meeting, you say, we have to do this tonight to determine whether it's regional impact and who's going to be part of that list?
If it's going to be regional impact, then there's going to be a design review. I mean, if if it's a big enough a project that we'd need a design review, no?
No, no, and regional impact is only, uh it isn't in the instance of design review, it's only in the instance of a full application.
No, 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 what Glenn's saying is, it would be such a big thing that we would require design review anyway, in which case during design review, we could then make a determination about.
That should this.
You would absolutely do that.
That's what I'm thinking.
You would absolutely say during the design review, this is likely going to be a regional impact project. If it comes back to us, we will notify these communities for these reasons.
Yep.
You could do that in the design review process.
That's what I was.
Because that's legally known to all of us.
Right, but we don't, it's up to the applicant to whether they commit for design review or not.
No, you'd have to waive it.
Why don't you settle on a meeting, the worst thing to do is talk about whether it's regional impact. If it is voted that it is, continue the meeting to the next time, notify the rest.
You absolutely can do that. You absolutely, I I hate to waste a public evening in that way. Um getting everybody together and then saying, okay, we're not gonna do a bloody thing about this, because we have more people to notify.
Well, we could also look at the plans, make sure it's clean, we could do a few.
I love the thought of it being tied to the design review process.
Yeah, that's.
I love that.
But it has to, design review, it doesn't necessarily involve, well, I guess, design review.
I don't think we've ever done a project with design review that didn't end up getting regional impact.
Right, so here's the the thing, as soon as you get an application, if you can notify the board, the board can put it in a public meeting like tonight, without it going to the butters, there's no requirement that the butters be notified, because that's the whole purpose of this, is to find out who the butters are. So you would put it on the schedule, on the agenda, to make a DRI. It wouldn't have to be a posted public hearing for that event, you wouldn't have to say, here comes two sixty-six, we know it's coming. Why don't you put it on the agenda for a meeting under board business or whatever? We can say, this is the location and the scope of this uh project, it's on a boundary line with Brentwood, say, or it falls into the Exeter River, or you know, the little river, whatever, it flows, uh you know, off off town to town. And then say, we we have a meeting, we discuss it, we make a DRI, then we put out who the butters are gonna be. Goes to, you know, we have the five days to to um send it out to the RPC and to.
To everybody else.
What's that?
Not to everybody else, that those those butters notices have already gone.
Yeah.
Not if you haven't scheduled a public hearing. This is, this is the whole point, it says, upon receipt of an application for development, review it promptly, determine whether or not the development approved could be construed as having potential regional impact. So you get to get it, it's too late for, you know, you don't get, you get it a month ahead, or you know, three weeks ahead of time, whatever, you get it.
We always send an application, we all, if we always have an application, in, there's always a.
The application.
Ninety percent of the time, there's a, there is a meeting that the board has before that actual.
The application is due in Thursday before the Tuesday meeting night. Not the hearing night, Tuesday meeting night.
Tuesday the meeting night, so in that case, you could put it on that agenda for the for the Tuesday meeting and, you know, the 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 first meeting.
As reviewed, that that first Tuesday night meeting, the reason why they come in on Thursday is because you all used to review the plans on Tuesday for completeness and all that kind of stuff, then you gave that responsibility to Glenn.
Perfect time to put it in, perfect time.
So we could either do it then, or at the end of the design review meeting, we could say, if this is coming back, we believe it's regional impact, these are the communities that.
I think we always make it part of the design review process.
Yeah.
Because if we're doing a design review, it's likely because it's a big project.
I'm just saying, so are you, we should add it to our procedures that we do it, that we, it comes to the board and we can vote.
Act, so are you calling designer review, mandatory preliminary review, or are you making one or same?
I'm not.
Because it's what's.
We don't require designer review.
We we don't, but anytime I see, anytime I see someone, anytime someone talks to me about a big project, I always say, yeah, designer review.
But preliminary review is a requirement, so what's the difference? So if we tie this to the requirement of having a preliminary review, whether we call it preliminary review or design review, the only way they gotta get out of preliminary review is if they ask for a waiver from the board granting.
Is 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 our mandatory preliminary review a fully noticed with a butter noticing?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yeah.
So it's essentially designer.
Right.
It is, it is, you're right.
So if we do that, then we should not be entertaining uh requests to waive that. If, because if we. If, because if we have to do, we have to take up DRI discussion at that meeting, then we can't waive that for folks.
And that should be the thing that Glenn determines that this is a big thing. Don't waive the preliminary review. They've requested it.
Right.
We're going to say no.
Well, I'm saying I shouldn't waive it at all because, because if the statute says that you shall.
But that's, but we do waive it because do we really want to do a note on a two-month subdivision? Like, we don't want to do that.
Okay, so in those cases, it goes, as Ellen says, it comes in on Thursday. You put it on the agenda to make a DRI on the subsequent meeting, Tuesday, first Tuesday of the month, and you make it. Ninety-nine percent of the time, it's going to be no regional impact and it goes right to the schedule for that next meeting. If, but it's not, you get out, you make that determination on that first Tuesday, you send out the notifications and you may be able to make it by that month's meeting. If not, you know, it'll be continued.
But see, if we wait, if we, if we wait until the first Tuesday to make that determination.
Does the first Tuesday puts them on the following month anyway? Doesn't put them on that month?
Right, so they, so they can't, there is no way for them, for that to mean that they can use that application period for a determination and stay in that month. It's impossible to do.
Well, they wouldn't be, if they give me, if they bring it in this, this Thursday, for example, this, well, it'll be the next Thursday. When they bring it in on that Thursday, they're not in, they're not going to have a public hearing that month anyway. It's the following month they get it. If they bring it in on May fifth, they're not on the May agenda.
Right.
They were on the June agenda. And the abutters notices don't actually have to go out until after the next public hearing. So if the board makes a determination at the meeting, the, whatever, Tuesday meeting, and, but the board has to then make the determination.
I agree. And I think we should change, I think we should add that back to the board's procedure. I think, I think it should be there. It should be as clear as we can make it.
So formally, consideration requirements and ten point O.
Wait, wait, wait. I'm writing something else. Give me one second.
Okay.
Okay.
So ten point O is formal consideration requirements. And the current ten point one says the board should begin formal consideration of the application within thirty days after submission of completed application. As provided yet. My motion would have been to make a new ten point one prior to opening a hearing on an application. The board should determine whether the application would have a regional impact for RSA thirty-six fifty-six. This, RSA, oh, sorry, RSA thirty-six, call it fifty-six. I was going to give you the type version of this.
Thirty-six, call it fifty-six. What do you want me to do with that? You said level.
Oh, I'm sorry. So prior to the opening of the hearing on the application, the board should determine whether the application would have a regional impact for RSA thirty-six fifty-six. And that gives you the requirements for determining regional impact. And so we can have that in front of us, but it doesn't need to be in our procedures. If the regional impact is determined to exist, the hearing should be continued to allow sufficient time for notification. We can change the wording in that since we're not necessarily opening a hearing on, we're doing it on a meeting.
I understand. What are you wanting to say?
Okay, so let's just, regional impact is determined to exist. The hear. The hearing should be scheduled to allow sufficient time for notification of affected towns and the RPC. This part right here is in bold. I just wanted to get it in the procedures so we don't miss it because we did, we did miss it in another board's.
I think that's a good thing to do. That's all.
Can I have this?
Yes, you can keep that.
So that's going to be in ten point one?
Ten point one, let me remember. The whole purpose is to get it to the board for the required vote as early as possible. If it, if it's a non-DRI issue, can come, we can schedule it for, you know, to be heard just before the hearing.
Most, most boards that I've dealt with, I just do it as the first item on, when there's the first public hearing.
Yes.
And it's just double the thing. It's right at the top of the list. Get it out of the way.
And do they continue then? Do they stop the process and continue it until those people would be available for the very first discussion?
You know, like, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I can't remember the last time I actually was involved in one that was a determination of regional impact. So I'm not sure.
I think we've talked thirty minutes about something. Rarely happens.
Yeah, but it does happen. It has happened. We missed it. Well, then we've got some stuff coming out down the line.
And it could possibly.
It's, so we'll get to that.
I'd like to go back to the part where it says it has to be heard within thirty days of completed application. We changed that a long time ago. I mean procedurally, but not in the bylaws. Because the state allowed it to be longer because, well, I think it's forty-five days. Does that sound right, Glenn?
No, I think it's only forty-five days for the ZBA.
I don't think it's.
Now, something changed with the planning board.
Hundred days, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, then we made something about completed application being determined by the planning board. Because when we get it in, there's no way to do it within thirty days because of the timelines with notifying the abutters and the newspapers and that it was the planning board who determined whether it was complete, which gave us two weeks. So.
So you're talking about what, the original ten point one?
Ten point O says within thirty days of a completed application, but we used to say that the planning board determined that. Which meant that we did that at a public hearing, which gave the extra time.
But if we have a public hearing and it's full of people and we make the determination at that point in time to continue it after we make, decide it's, that's a waste of everybody's time.
Aight, girl.
And I can just imagine all these people are finally gathered to hear this thing that they've been hearing about, concerned about. And now we're sending them on their way on a procedural matter.
For a month.
But you've already known about that for at least a month. So, yeah, you could have doubled it earlier.
Exactly.
That's, that's the idea.
Can I add in this to term about planning board after thirty days?
Yes.
Just a couple?
Yeah.
Okay, Glenn, we talked a bit about the motion.
No, don't think. It says, okay, the board should determine whether it has a regional impact per RSA thirty-six fifty-six. If a regional impact is determined to exist, the hearing should be scheduled to allow sufficient time for notification of affected towns and the RPC. That's all I have. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
That's what I was going to mean.
That's what I figured.
All right. You have a motion?
So moved.
You have a second? Any further discussion? See, no. I'm in favor.
I didn't mean to.
I know, it's my fault.
Are you in favor?
I am.
Can I add to the, amend ten point one?
Yeah, two.
I can still vote Mike Como's formative.
Excuse me?
If you have Mike Como's formative.
Do you know, our CCDs know we're off the top here again? Oh, wait, I can, I can look it up.
I don't, it's easy to find.
I, I'll look it up for you.
You can look it up the other time.
Can you share it?
You, okay.
Am I in your context? Can you share it?
You are returning.
We're not entertaining the motion, we're just.
I would.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Doug?
No.
I am sorry you heard that.
Thank you for being me. Thank you for being me.
Does anybody need Pat Sullivan's business card?
Chief.
Probably came out of Kelly stuff.